Start with a roll call, please.
Evans.
Here.
Mitchell, Mizell, Mutchler.
Here.
Wall.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Mayor Carr.
Here.
So, Dev Quorum, I'm gonna start off with a moment of silence for Gibb Atkins. He was a longtime member of this community and I feel that it would be nice to honor him and I've got some comments I'll read later as well in my comments, but I certainly wanted to start off the meeting with a moment of silence for him, so if you'll join me in that, please. Thank you. Don, let's start with the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Miss Powerhead, I pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come to you tonight, Lord, we want to thank you for your many blessings and, Lord, we come tonight with heavy hearts over the loss of our friend as well as one of our city leaders, Lord, we want to thank you for Gibb, thank you for the example that he set for always being in the best interest of the community, always giving wisdom and perspective to be able to help make our community better. Lord, we just thank you for a promise of heaven, a place where this is not the end, and, Lord, we thank you for that. Tonight, we just pray a very special prayer for Angie and for the family, Lord, that you would comfort them, be very near to them during this time, over the next several days, just give them strength, and, Lord, for their friends as they rally around them, Lord, to just encourage them and to provide support to them. Lord, we pray for this council tonight, that you would just encourage them as they have lost not only a fellow council member but also a friend. Lord, I pray that you just bless them, and, Lord, that you would find the right person to be able to fill that seat that would share the same values and goals to this community. Lord, tonight, we thank you for our leaders, we pray that you'd bless them this evening as they make those decisions for our community, thank you for our police, fire, and EMS, watch over, protect them, keep them safe, and for all of our city workers, Lord, as they labor for this community. We ask your blessings upon this meeting tonight, and once again, we thank you for your richest blessings upon our city, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody sign it? Nope? Okay. Nobody signed in for public comments. So, move on to discussions and presentations there and none of there, and I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Jordan moved, Mutchler seconded. Roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved, and I'll now entertain a motion to enter into public hearing regarding the final plat re-subdivision of lots 1, 2, and 3 of ER Close First Edition, the final plat of Walcon subdivision, final plat of Towers Property subdivision, final plat of replat of Lot 9 and part of vacated alley in Block 2 of John Crowe's Edition, final plat of Donnelly's Edition, and rezone of Donnelly's Edition Number 3.
So moved.
Second.
Garner moved, Evans seconded. Roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Okay, we're now in public hearing. Christina, you wanna open us up with that?
I'll start with the final plat of re-subdivision, Lot 1, 2, 3, and Block 2 of Claude's First Edition. What this is, it's a, it's one lot at 387 Clough Street, it's 387 Clough Street and 5, it's, sorry, let me start over here, it's 387 Clough Street and 535 Hay Street Lots, it's reconfiguration of two lots to three lots to obtain building areas for three houses. It's zoned RS2 setbacks, you know, 2510 to 25, the utilities have been approved by the public director, so we're asking for a final plat to take two lots to three lots.
Okay, as we're in public hearing, any public comments regarding final plat? All right, seeing nobody come forward, we'll move on to the final plat of Walcon subdivision.
This one is a lot on 817 Holman Road, it's a vacant lot directly behind Butler's Auto Sales on Elm Street, it's zoned RS2, it's currently identified as Lebanon acreage, so it needs to be platted for new construction, so right now, they're looking to just replat it, or have it platted, which we should say, and then in the future, there may be a request come up to rezone it from RS1 to C1, but that's probably in January.
Okay, so we're in public hearing, any public comments regarding final plat of Walcon subdivision? Seeing no one come forward, on to the final plat of Tower Property subdivision, please.
This one is on 831 Tower Road, it's directly behind or north of the Lebanon seniors housing near Copeland Drive, it's zoned M1 light industrial, but it's a residential district, it must be properly platted because it's Lebanon acreage, it's going from one lot to two lots, and so they're asking just to replat it at the moment, from one lot to two lots.
Okay, as we're in public hearing, any public comments regarding final plat of Tower Property subdivision? Seeing no one come forward, the final plat and replat of Lot 9 and part of vacated alley in Block 2 of John Crowe's Edition?
This one is on 910 North Jefferson, it's right, to the right of Jefferson Package, the new building, the alley had been vacated for Jefferson Package to expand their business, so this resident is requesting the alley to be vacated behind him as well, so the leftover area can be maintained by the property owners. There is a signed letter by all the remaining property owners that is affected by this vacate, I think they will follow suit also in the future. This particular alley was vacated, it was, it was put in effect a while back for an alley, and historically, in the subdivisions, you would split an alley half and half, but in this particular instance, the alley is all on one side of a subdivision, so this is why it's only affecting certain residential residents. It's zoned currently right now C1 commercial, so right now, we're looking to follow the same precedent we set for Jefferson Package to vacate the alley behind the resident next to him.
All right, as we're in public hearing, any comments, public comments regarding the final plat? All right, seeing no one come forward, on to the final plat of Donnelly's Edition Number 3.
So this is four lots at 808 through 826 of North Adams Avenue, it's right, it's on Adams Avenue, just off Bryce, backs up to the Lebanon Cemetery. This first approval we're asking for is to plat four lots to eight lots, where we would divide, the front half would be still RS2 residential, and the back half, later on your next vote, would be rezoned to cemetery zoning, but this current one, we're just asking to replat it from four lots to eight lots, and it still meets the requirements for RS2, requirements for 7,500 square feet, or 7,500 square feet into the lot, so it's still meeting the minimum requirements.
All right, as we're in public hearing, any public comments on the final plat of Donnelly's Edition Number 3? Seeing no one come forward, on to the rezone of Donnelly's Edition Number 3.
So again, looking at those lots, if those are approved, to look into rezone the back four lots from RS2 to RU2, which would be a cemetery expansion.
And those are the east lots, is what you're talking about, correct?
Yes, yes.
All right, as we're in public hearing, any public comments on the rezone of Donnelly's Edition Number 3, 24, lots 2468? Seeing no one come forward, then that's, any council, you have any public comments you want to add to any of those? All right, I'll now entertain a motion to come out of public hearing then. Thank you, Christina. Jordan moved and Mutchler seconded. Roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
All right, now out of public hearing and on to ordinances there. And Lacy, get your water ready, I guess.
I know.
No doubt.
You can blame it all on staff, right? No, I'm kidding. Council Bill 6948, we'll start there. Anything, council, you want to add or question about that? This is the final plat, re-subdivision 1, 2, and 3 of ER Close First Edition? First reading then, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of re-subdivision of lots 1, 2, and 3 in Block 2 ER Clough's First Edition to the City of Lebanon, Le Clee County, Missouri.
Motion to approve. Wall and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler. Wall.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of re-subdivision of lots 1, 2, and 3 in Block 2 ER Clough's First Edition to the City of Lebanon, Le Clee County, Missouri.
Move on to second.
Evans and Mutchler on the second, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Council Bill 6948 becomes ordinance 7190. Council Bill 6949, this is the final plat of the Walcon subdivision, any questions on that, council? First reading then, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Walcon subdivision to the City of Lebanon, Le Clee County, Missouri.
Second.
Mutchler and Evans, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Walcon subdivision to the City of Lebanon, Le Clee County, Missouri.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Jordan and Garner on the second, roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Council Bill 6949 comes ordinance 7191. Council Bill 6950, the final plat of Tower Property subdivision, any questions on that, council? First reading then, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Tower Property subdivision to the City of Lebanon, Le Clee County, Missouri.
Most approved.
Jordan and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Tower Property subdivision to the City of Lebanon, Le Clee County, Missouri.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Wall and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Council Bill 6950 becomes ordinance 7192. Council Bill 6951, this is the final plat of replat of Lot 9 and part of vacated alley in Block 1 of the John Crowe's Edition, any questions on that, council? Okay, first reading then, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of replat of Lot 9 and part of vacated alley in Block 1 to John Crowe's Edition to the City of Lebanon, Le Clee County, Missouri.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Wall, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of replat of Lot 9 and part of vacated alley in Block 1 to John Crowe's Edition to the City of Lebanon, Le Clee County, Missouri.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Evans and Mutchler on the second, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Council Bill 6951 becomes ordinance 7193. Council Bill 6952 is the final plat of Donnelly's Edition Number 3, any questions on that, council? Okay, first reading then, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Donnelly's Edition Number 3 to the City of Lebanon, Le Clee County, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wall and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Donnelly's Edition Number 3 to the City of Lebanon, Le Clee County, Missouri.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Mutchler and Jordan on the second, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Council Bill 6952 becomes ordinance 7194, thanks Christina, appreciate it. Council Bill 6953, Mike.
Mayor and council, this is the annual aggregate material bid for Willard Corries. Prices basically stay the same, except for a couple of the loan items from this past year, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, council? All right, first reading then, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, authorizing the purchase of aggregate material from Willard Corries for the 2026 calendar year.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, authorizing the purchase of aggregate material from Willard Corries for the 2026 calendar year.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Evans and Mutchler on the second, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Council Bill 6953 becomes ordinance 7195. Council Bill 6954.
This is the annual ready-mix concrete bid, Lebanon Ready Mix was the only bidder this year, price increased per cubic yard, $8, about a 5% increase from $144 on five and a half bagged mix to $152 cubic yard, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, council? First reading then, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, authorizing the purchase of ready-mix concrete from Lebanon Ready Mix for the 2026 calendar year.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Evans, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, authorizing the purchase of ready-mix concrete from Lebanon Ready Mix for the 2026 calendar year.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Mutchler and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Council Bill 6954 becomes ordinance 7196. And Council Bill 6955.
This is the annual asphalt contract with Willard Asphalt, prices increased in general on the, on the surface and base courses, $4 a ton, about a 5% increase, price increased a dollar a ton for the asphalt that we pick up at their plant to use for passing material. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions on that, council? All right, first reading then, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Willard Asphalt Paving for the purchase and installation of asphalt for the 2026 calendar year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wall and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Willard Asphalt Paving for the purchase and installation of asphalt for the 2026 calendar year.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Evans and Mutchler on the second, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Council Bill 6955 becomes ordinance 7197. And Council Bill 6956.
This is the task order with Archer Elgin, engineer Richard mentioned a while ago, and it is for improvements at the intersection of Fourth and Van Buren, this is part of a planned project for a west loop traffic, traffic relief project, basically what we're asking them to do is do plans to increase the radius sizes on Van Buren there at Fourth Street, so it would allow trucks to be able to turn that, those corners easier and not get over into the oncoming lane of traffic, and they're also going to lay out a potential crosswalk there at Van Buren, crossing Fourth Street into Gaskin Park, cost for the task order for the engineering is $29,800, they say that the preliminary plan should be done within 90 days, happy to answer any questions.
Is that both radiuses or just the one going from Van Buren going east?
They're looking at both sides.
Both sides, okay, good.
Great. Any other questions, comments, council? All right, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving engineering services with Archer Elgin for improvements to the intersection of Fourth and Van Buren Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jordan and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving engineering services with Archer Elgin for improvements to the intersection of Fourth and Van Buren Street.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Mutchler and Garner on the second. Roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Council Bill 596, 6956 becomes ordinance 7198.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. Council Bill 6957.
Mayor, mayor council, this is a ordinance just giving approval to remove a couple of buildings that are in ill repair to clean up a site there at the old city compound on, on Second, between Second Commercial and Van Buren.
Any questions regarding that, council? First reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the surplus and demolition of city-owned buildings located at Harrison and West Second Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wall and Evans, roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the surplus and demolition of city-owned buildings located at Harrison and West Second Street.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Evans and Mutchler on the second, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Council Bill 6957 becomes ordinance 7199, thanks, Richard, and back to Mike with Council Bill 6958.
Mayor and council, this is for the non-grant portion of the sidewalk on Beck Lane, and then it goes basically from Linda Circle on Beck Lane down to Ivy Lane, and then from that intersection of Beck and Ivy on to Elm Street, about 4,400 linear feet, the materials we have estimated not to exceed for that project is $200,000, happy to answer any questions you might have about the project. Lot of driveways.
400 feet.
4,400 feet.
4,400, I was like, aw, gee.
Lot of driveways, couple of street crossings.
That hurts.
You're in the concrete business, aren't you? You're in the sidewalking business. Yeah, it's almost a mile, so.
Not as bad.
Any questions, council? First reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the purchase of various materials for the sidewalk construction for Beck and Ivy Lane.
Move, most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the purchase of various materials for the sidewalk construction for Beck and Ivy Lane.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Garner and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Council Bill 6958 becomes ordinance 7200.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Mike. Council Bill 6959, Jared.
Good evening, this is a request to initiate land lease for one of the hangars that Mr. Files owns that he's selling to Wiley Tow.
Any questions on that, council? First reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the sale of a hanger owned by Tommy Files to Wiley Tow and/or Tow Construction and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into and execute a ground space lease agreement between the city and Wiley Tow and/or Tow Construction for the use of ground space located at the Floyd W. Jones Lebanon Regional Airport.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the sale of a hanger owned by Tommy Files to Wiley Tow and/or Tow Construction and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into and execute a ground space lease agreement between the city and Wiley Tow and/or Tow Construction for the use of ground space located at the Floyd W. Jones Lebanon Regional Airport.
Move on the second. Second, second.
Mutchler and Wall on the second, roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-nine fifty-nine becomes ordinance seventy-two oh-one. Council. Sixty, sixty-nine sixty. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
You're all right.
Okay, our next one is, Mr. Coach has elected to vacate his hanger, and we'd like to offer this to Anita Freeman, who's next on our long list, and she's accepted it, and we'd like to enter that agreement.
How long's the list?
We have fourteen or fifteen on there.
That's awesome. Great problem to have. Any other questions? First reading, then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into and execute a T-hanger lease agreement between the city and Anita Freeman for the use of T-hanger number eight located at the Floyd W. Jones Lebanon Regional Airport.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wall and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into and execute a T-hanger lease agreement between the city and Anita Freeman for the use of T-hanger number eight located at the Floyd W. Jones Lebanon Regional Airport.
A second.
Second, second.
Evans and Jordan on the second, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-nine sixty becomes ordinance seventy-two oh-two. Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-one.
Yes, this is a request to enter an agreement with Emery Saps &amp; Sons to start the reconstruction of our taxiway and apron that was in our master plan and approved by the state using MPE, BIL money. We'd like to start that in the spring is when they're, when they're guessing.
Any questions on that, Council? First reading, then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Emery Saps &amp; Sons Incorporated to complete the repairs and reconstruction of the taxiway and apron areas at the Floyd W. Jones Lebanon Regional Airport.
Most approved.
Second.
Evans and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Emery Saps &amp; Sons Incorporated to complete the repairs and reconstruction of the taxiway and apron areas at the Floyd W. Jones Lebanon Regional Airport.
Move on the second. Second, second.
Evans and Mutchler on the second, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-one becomes ordinance seventy-two oh-three. Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-two.
Yes, this is a request to purchase our Flock Safety LPRs, the license plate readers. We used a different company out of Kent City past years, and they have sold out and moved into a more standardized system, which is basically everywhere, and it's called Flock. This be a multi-year agreement with them as we had with the previous.
Any questions, Council? First reading, then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a contract with Flock Safety for the purchase of automated license plate readers and video cameras.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a contract with Flock Safety for the purchase of automated license plate readers and video cameras.
Move on the second. Second, second.
Mutchler and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-two becomes ordinance seventy-two oh-four. Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-three.
This is a request to purchase new body cams and dash cams for police department. The current ones that we have were purchased in nineteen, and they're at end of life, and we've got about fifty percent of them that's down.
Any questions, Council?
How long will that take to get those?
I'm sorry.
If approved, how long will that take to get those and get them active?
Sixty days. It's around sixty days.
First reading, then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a contract with Axon for the purchase of new vehicles and body cameras, approving the surplus of the existing watch guard camera equipment and accessories, and amending the fiscal year 2026 capital improvements fund budget to include the purchase of the equipment and accessories.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Evans, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a contract with Axon for the purchase of new vehicles and body cameras, approving the surplus of the existing watch guard camera equipment, accessories, and amending the fiscal year 2026 capital improvement fund budget to include the purchase of the equipment and accessories.
Move on the second. Second, second.
Mutchler and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-three becomes ordinance seventy-two oh-five. Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-four.
Fire, or the police department received a grant worth $50,000 from Blue Shield, and we'd like to use that money to replace some of the older rugged systems in the police cars, and that $50,000 would provide ten of them, ten replacements. This is the ruggedized Tough Books and their vehicles.
Any questions, Council? First reading, then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of laptops and supporting equipment for the police department from SHI.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wall and Evans, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of laptops and supporting equipment for the police department from SHI.
Move on the second. Second, second.
Evans and Mutchler on the second, roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-four becomes ordinance seventy-two oh-six. Finally, Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-five.
The public safety software for the police department now allows you to do e-ticketing. To do that, we need the printers in the vehicle, so this would be another hardware purchase so those patrol guys can issue tickets electronically and have the receipt right there to hand out.
Any questions on that, Council? First reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of printers and supporting equipment for e-ticketing for the police department from Rugged Depot.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of printers and supporting equipment for e-ticketing for the police department from Rugged Depot.
Move on the second. Second, second.
Mutchler and Wall on the second, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-five becomes ordinance seventy-two oh-seven. Thanks, Jared O.C., in just a second, though. Yeah, I forgot about that, too, so you can blame that on the clerk.
Actually, that is not my fault.
Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-six.
Just a clerical error.
Is that me?
Yes, sir.
Derek's got the wrong one up there. He's done me off, so. Mayor, Council, thank you. This is a request for the purchase of the training facility that we spoke to you guys about during your October retreat and then last month in the work session as well. I'm gonna let Troy, he's asked me to let him explain some of the financial side of it, but essentially, this is $792,000 for the purchase of the structure, construction of the foundation and everything for that struck and installation of it upon its arrival. Currently, the plan is to still put it out at the airport. Did some revisions to the building after speaking to the police chief. There was a couple of things he wanted added to that. We've done those revisions, and the final product is right where we said it would be, at about $765,000. Jessica threw us a little curve and said we needed bond, performance bond and payment bond. Unfortunately, that added about $27,000 to the cost for those bonds, and those are required by state law, so happy to answer any questions that I can right now.
So, I'll add to kind of supplement. This is about a $1.4 million project. We are in the, in the current capital improvement budget. There was $300,000 to reconstruct T-hangers at the airport. I think that was in there from an error in talking with Richard. It'd been in there for a couple of years, so there was $300,000. That was really for a public works maintenance facility, but it was in there, so it was in there. So, we canceled that. That freed up $300,000. The budget also had $100,000 to continue design work on a new animal shelter. Obviously, with the local use tax failing, we kind of went back. We're gonna go back with a much cheaper alternative. You'll, it would be our goal that you'll see some funding in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget for an animal shelter, but something that can be built with, maybe not a three and a half million-dollar project I think was originally designed. This will be a, probably a metal building on its current, near its current location. We'll try to pull the costs dramatically down so we can fit it in with other resources. The last component is, the proposed site of this is in the, kind of the southwest area of the southwest component of the airport, and it would necessitate us building a road and extending infrastructure back from Fremont, if I'm remembering my road, by the, on the, by the National Guard Armory. The goal would be to not only facilitate this development, but open, open up that portion of the airport for additional commercial and industrial development opportunities as well. We anticipate that cost being about $750,000, so you probably see those numbers start to come into the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, given the lead time. Get started now with this facility. We can always access the facility through the airport from our, with our public safety personnel, and then it may take us a while to build the infrastructure out there over the next year or two based on funding. So I wanted to kind of give you the background of the total spend that is associated with this project, but this would get the full project encumbered, and then they could, they could proceed over to get it ordered and get it constructed as soon as the contractor would, can get, get the work done.
This cost purchases the building and the instruction, or the construction of it?
It just, yes, it purchases the building and the construction of it, and then we would be responsible for the infrastructure to the site eventually.
Correct.
I will add to that, while obviously there's no binding paperwork or agreements in place, we do have, the Lebanon Rural Fire District has verbally committed to $100,000. Just last week, the Hazel Green Fire Protection District approached me and would like to, at this point in time, it looks like provide us with $20,000 towards the project as well. They're a much smaller district, don't have the financial capabilities of others, but they feel that it's important to be part of the project and help support the maintenance of it, of it over the years, so.
Now, that's something we could do with their money, too, is, then, some of it wears out over time.
Yeah, there'd be, there'd be some maintenance replacement of.
That kind of stuff, maybe we do that with theirs or something along that lines, too, maybe.
Replacement of the burn panels and stuff of that nature will be necessary over the years, but that would certainly be helpful towards the project.
Great.
After you order the building, how long does it take to get it?
Well, it's amazing how when they, when we were first talking about it, it was eight to ten months, and then when we got serious, it was all of a sudden, it was six to eight months, so I'm somewhere in the six to eight month timeframe for them to have it here. And then they said construction usually takes four weeks.
They were make, they were planning on two, two to four months for decision-making, I guess. I guess.
Okay, great addition.
Any other questions, comments, Council? First reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase and construction of a fire and police training structure from WHP Training Towers.
Motion approved.
Second.
Wall and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase and construction of a fire and police training structure from WHP Train, Training Towers.
Move on the second. Second, second.
Evans and Mutchler on the second, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-six becomes ordinance seventy-two oh-eight.
Thank you very much. You guys made a, a great impact in our training and our future. Thank you.
Awesome. Glad we could support it. And Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-seven, Troy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an ordinance that establishes the golf course operating fund and the financial records of the city and estimates the roughly seven months of revenues and expenditures through the end of this fiscal year. It accommodates the next two ordinances for the golf cart lease and the maintenance equipment. The revenues are based of roughly $465,700 is based on 2024 revenues generated at the golf course, primarily from membership fees, greens fees, cart rentals. And on the expenditure side, it, it has the equipment lease and the golf cart lease as well as staffing for full, for full-time positions, two of which have already been hired. One is in the process of recruitment, the general manager, and the fourth and final position would be hired once the general manager's on board. Our goal is to get the general manager on board by the first of January. Debt service for the irrigation system will be reflected, not in this budget, but the first payment would be in, in roughly October of 2026 is which is in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. So this is roughly a break-even operation based on 2024 revenue estimates for the next six months of operation, but creates the fund and gets everything ready to go, and we can stop borrowing from ourselves to pay it, so we'll have, should have enough appropriation to deal with everything Darren needs, including seed and all the chemicals that he needs for the green utilities, all, all the stuff associated with running the golf course. And then we come back, you'll see a full year budget as part of the budget preparation. This gets us through June 30th of 2026.
Any questions on that, Council? Fund eighty-nine. I hope I can shoot it eighty-nine at some time. That'd be great. First reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2026 city budget by adding new revenues and expenditures for golf course operating fund.
Most approved.
Second.
Garner and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
He's really thinking hard, aren't you?
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2026 city budget by adding new revenues and expenditures for golf course operating fund.
Move on the second.
Same cite.
Evans and Garner on the second, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Can we amend it to Fund seventy-two?
I don't know if there is a Fund seventy-two or not, but that would be funny.
The, the reason we, that's actually a good idea. The reason we picked eighty-nine is we wanted, it's an enterprise fund, so the expectation is that all revenues, it's similar to how we do the electric utility, the water and the fiber, that all of the fees in it will fully support its operation. So it was sustain, that all, that's where all of our other enterprise funds are, but we could do a seventy-two. I mean, if you'd like, we could do, we could do eighty-nine and then.
We could, we could do that some other time. Yes.
Okay.
All right, so Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-seven becomes ordinance seventy-two oh. It's got, it's ordinance seventy-two oh-nine. I mean, that's, that's, yeah, that's kind of, that's close.
Yeah.
Thanks, Troy. All right, Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-eight, Jared. Seventy-two is bar, yes.
If we're gonna extend.
No, it's still stayed the same.
All right, Jared. Yes, this is a request to change our lease with Clear Creek. Of course, we obtained the previous lease agreement, and this is to update the carts and provide a set of the gas, electric carts. That's fifty-five carts that we're currently looking to lease.
Any questions on that, Council?
The same number we have now.
We got fifty-eight? Fifty-four now.
This would be how many?
Fifty-five. And we're looking at the electric ones because the maintenance cost on the gas ones are astronomical. We just got our first maintenance bill from some of the carts, and it was five thousand alone, so gotta get away from the gas ones.
What about batteries, being able to plug all these in? What are we doing there?
Well, we're looking at a, the metal building. Sean's got, I think, two bids already, and then we'll have to put them in a different building because of insurance requirements.
Okay. And power to it?
I'm sorry?
Is there good enough supply to handle that all at one time?
We'll take the power to it, and we're looking at a new building, but temporarily we could, we could get the existing, where they stormed, which is below the fitness center, we can, we can get power to it and operate it for no more than what we're planning on doing.
And they're not in a rush to deliver, they'll work on our schedule. If Sean says we're going to have this thing up in two or three months, then we'll hold off until that point.
Any other questions? First reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a golf cart lease with Clear Creek Golf Car and Club Car for the Lebanon Community Golf Course.
Motion approved. Say it.
Wall and Jordan, roll call please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Muchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a golf cart lease with Clear Creek Golf Car and Club Car for the Lebanon Community Golf Course.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Garner and Muchler on the second. Roll call please.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Muchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-eight becomes ordinance seventy-two ten. Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-nine.
This is a request to enter agreement with Jacobson for equipment to maintain the golf course. I've got Darren here as well to, if there's questions on the shape of their current equipment, which is pretty bad, but specific questions, he's here as well. We did bid this, our look at three different quotes from ProTurf and Van Wall as well. They came back the cheapest.
You gonna be able to handle all new equipment?
I'll suffer through it.
And I suppose the Jacobson equipment is fine? I have no idea. What was, what else bid? Toro?
We have a Toro bid, a John Deere bid, and a Jacobson. John Deere was close, Toro was number-one market share in the industry, and they're a little bit higher.
Just hope it doesn't take up all Jacobson's time, that's where I'd take my lawnmower, too.
The, if I might add, the one thing that I feel more confident about, I'm not real familiar with Jacobson's stuff. They're not big in this area, or Oklahoma region, but known this gentleman for a long time, very trustworthy individual. He's assured me that he wants to partner with us and let us be the first full fleet of their stuff in the state. He has assured me that he will go above and beyond and make sure that we get all the service that we need. He wants us, he wants this to be a good advertising. Oh, I also kind of worked him a little bit. I got, in their bid, they're offering a free pull behind aerator, so I'll be able to aerate fairways for the first time, I think, ever. They're also throwing in a full set, brand-new reels for Greensmore that will allow me to burn cut. That's usually a nine thousand, ninety-five-hundred-dollar cost. They're throwing that in, the pull behind aerator is usually about a fourteen, about a fourteen-thousand-dollar cost. It won't be a new one, the aerator will not be, but they've offered that for free. And they've offered ten thousand dollars worth of parts and credit, parts and service credit over the course of the four years to be used how we deem fit.
And they're giving Darren a new personal tractor. Maybe.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, first reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a maintenance equipment lease with Jacobson for the Lebanon Community Golf Course.
Most approve.
Second. Jordan and Wall, roll call please.
Evans?
Yes.
Muchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a maintenance equipment lease with Jacobson for the Lebanon Community Golf Course.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Muchler and, is that Garner?
Yep.
On the second. Roll call please.
Muchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Council Bill sixty-nine sixty-nine becomes ordinance seventy-two eleven. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we do have first reading tonight, and this is on the rezoning there of Council Bill sixty-nine seventy is for the rezoning of the Donley addition. Number three, any further questions or comments on that, council? All right, first reading then.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri amending the city of Lebanon, Missouri zoning district map by approving the rezoning of lots two, four, six, and eight of Donley's addition number three located at eight oh eight through eight twenty-six North Adams Avenue from R S two residential to R U two rural district.
Most approve.
Second. Jordan and Evans, roll call please.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Muchler?
Yes.
All right, Council Bill sixty-nine seventy passes first reading, replaced on next council meeting's docket. That's all for ordinances tonight. Move on to comments, any comments from staff and the audience? Thank you, Christine, appreciate it. No comments from staff and the audience? Okay, move to chief. Anything? Nothing? Chief?
Yes, Mayor, after a couple of years of working on this, back and forth with our firefighters and the local, they've been interested for a number of years for, to work a forty-eight, ninety-six schedule, which would be two days on, four days off. I was never a fan of it, working forty-eight hours every time you come to work seems a little much for me, but just this month, we introduced a one-three, two-three schedule, which means they'll be working one day, off three, work two, off three. It's taking hold across the country, and while it still has forty-eight-hour shifts in it, it's tied down to only three in a month, which I'm much more happy with other than four or five. And we're about to kick that off on December twenty-seventh, will be the first day, and the local accepted it with, I'm told, a very, very high acceptance in their vote, and I'm excited to kick that off. And if my research is right, and what Chief Woody has found is right, we are the first department in the state of Missouri to adopt that work schedule. Very happy to-
And you said it's one day, three day, two day?
Three days.
Okay.
Yep, one-three, two-three.
And then I guess it keeps going, so start on Monday with that, Sunday it moves-
It just keeps rotating, just like their twenty-four, forty-eight does now. It's the same hours they work, there's no change in the hours they work or anything, it's just how the days are massed together, so. Happy to answer any questions about it or anything.
December twenty-seventh. Cool. Thank you, chief. Richard?
I just wanted to give a reminder that candidate filing starts tomorrow at eight a.m. and ends December thirtieth at five p.m.
Eight a.m., December thirty-first?
Thirty.
Thirtieth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thirtieth. Counselor, everything?
Nothing.
Troy?
Not much. I wanted to take this opportunity to invite the mayor and the council to our employee holiday luncheon, which is December nineteenth, over at the Civic Center. Good food, good entertainment, and it's from eleven to one, so come for a free meal, chance to kind of celebrate a pretty good year for everybody involved with the city. So wanted to encourage you that, wish you a happy holidays, since this is the last meeting of this calendar year, and just to let you know, we'll be kind of at the disposal of the Atkins family, should they need anything over the next week or so, as we celebrate the life of Gibbs. So city staff, Sean Williams has been helping, we'll just kind of do that as they get ready, so we've kind of placed ourselves at their disposal. If they, if they need anything, we're happy to help, so just wanted to share that with you, and again, invite everybody to the holiday luncheon on the nineteenth.
We're having to schedule on Gibbs services.
Yes, yes, we do. Visitation is four to seven on Wednesday, and the service, the funeral is at two o'clock at First Baptist Church on Thursday.
Thank you.
Visitation also at the church?
At the funeral.
Okay.
Home and house funeral.
Garner, have anything?
Just wanted to say we had a, last weekend was the Miss Merry Christmas pageant, there was four pageants, there was tiny miss, little miss, junior miss, and miss. And we had about sixty-eight candidates all together, it went really smooth. The committee led by Becca Admar as the director, had a great committee, they started with zero money, and when all, all the bills are paid and everything, it looks like next year they will be able to start with about eight thousand dollars. So they did, did great, we had a lot of good comments, and I think it went really smooth. Two Guys Music took over the new sound system that the Civic Center has, and walked us through all that, and they were awesome. So she will come, probably the first meeting in January was a detailed report, but-
Yeah, she said-
Very, very successful. And the mayor got to come and present the check.
Yeah.
We gave a twenty-five-hundred-dollar scholarship.
It was great.
And the MCs were great.
It was a good event. I can't believe how fast they got through them. It was like me at a council meeting or something. It was great, though, really good event, so, yeah. Jordan?
Yeah, I got a couple things. One of them's for the internet feed, it's in your area, Jerry, there's a driveway over on New Buffalo Road that's getting a growing number of spin marks in the highway, in the road, whether they back out of the road, take off, going east or going west. They come a few more, you say, yo, there's probably nothing you can do besides catch them, but if we get the word out on maybe our internet feed, they'll know they're being watched, so.
Well, they might be interested to know that we have game cameras and some other technology that we can slip over there and, and make that probably not as entertaining to do, or at least, at least the price of admission gets a little steeper.
It started out as one, and it's just growing every day or two, and then, you know, I've got it on, again, on Facebook, it's about the Madison and Fourth Street intersection, are we having any problems with the wrecks down there? I have not seen anything.
I'd have to look into it, I can get you, I can get you some information on that at the next meeting.
We go by there three, four times today, and I have never seen one, I just wanted to kind of check rumor.
When, two days ago?
I didn't expect them to be.
Okay. I think you might have, I think we had a couple of bus wrecks in the last few weeks, and that was where one of them was, I believe, so my colleague is reminding me.
I hadn't seen anything down there, so.
Okay.
Okay, good that, I think that parking may solve anything there may be. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Wall? Mr. Muchler? Evans?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A couple of things that, I guess I want to, I want to start off with some, with comments, and I know I released this the other day, but I just wanted to read them for the public record, and for those that maybe missed it or anything, but, and it's in regards to Councilman Atkins, and, let's see here, Gibbs dedicated more than thirty years to serving the people of Lebanon, and has represented Ward One on city council since twenty-fifteen. He was not only a committed public servant, he was one of Lebanon's strongest advocates. Gibbs believed deeply in his community, championed its progress, and took great pride in seeing Lebanon grow and succeed. His steady leadership, his knowledge of city operations, and his passion for improving quality of life made a lasting impact on our city. Gibbs was a respected colleague, a thoughtful voice on council, and a true friend to Lebanon. And on behalf of City Lebanon, we extend our heartfelt condolences to Gibbs' family, friends, and all that, all who were touched by his service, and grateful for his decades of dedication, and for the legacy he leaves in the community he loves so much. And I just, I've, I've known Gibbs since, I can't even remember, I was a little tiny kid at the Rotary Trailer, I think, because he's been around forever and has done that forever, and certainly is a staple of the community, and I think is volunteerism, and he always had his heart in the right spot, and always wanted to do what was best for the community, and almost to a fault, I think, it is, he was, he was so entrenched in outgoing and making sure the community was taken care of, that, that I think he sometimes failed to take care of himself, and certainly, we're going to miss him, and, and I wish, wish the, that his family finds peace, and, and, and knowing that he's in a better place now, and I think he truly is, and, and that's, that's all I'm going to say about Gibbs, so I certainly appreciate him and everything that he's done for, for the city of Lebanon, so. I do, since it is the last meeting of the year, I'm going to, I have some, a year-end review speech that I've created here, so let me get through this as well, so as, this is our final meeting, and I want to take a few minutes just to kind of simply walk back through twenty-twenty-five together, and, and kind of the order of everything's happened, I was, it's kind of amazing of going through minutes and agendas and everything else from the last year, so, and I truly think that we have a whole lot of momentum that started in January and grew as we got through the whole year. Obviously, we kicked off January with, we had, and this is all just going through the meeting minutes and everything, we had the updates on utilities, stormwater, capital improvement plan, we also approved a ballot measure for Proposition U, which was going to be dedicated to training facilities, animal shelters, we mentioned tonight, and improvements to the Boswell Aquatic Center. Unfortunately, that did not pass, but, but I don't think that stopped our momentum or the work that followed. In February, we recognized the Ronald McDonald House Week, which supports six hundred and thirteen Lebanon families, and we also presented COPE with a check of over twenty-one-hundred dollars, which those funds are collected from court fines to help survivors of domestic violence, as you guys know. We also reduced the cost of West Bland Storm Water Project with a change order, and that was certainly helped out the taxpayers, that was pretty significant, I don't remember the exact amount, but March was, was more about growth and planning, we approved new subdivisions, and continued conversations on long-term transportation needs, including the I forty-four Highway five connector, which you spoke about a little bit tonight, but, and then also the sidewalk expansion throughout town, that was certainly interesting to see where all, there's a lot of sidewalks, I mean, forty-four hundred feet plus, there's more with, I mean, that's not all of it, that's just that one, the one little instance there. April brought some years, the most meaningful recognitions on April fourteenth, we presented Silver Leaf Award to Rob Day, recognizing over thirty years of service, and we also recognized Officer Roy Wilmack with the Life Saving Award as well at that meeting, and then in April twenty-eighth, we presented the Mayor Lyle Anderson Gold Leaf Awards, and the adult recipient was Harold Bradshaw, was, who was, who's honored for a lifetime of service, including preparing weekly free meals, volunteering across the community. Our youth recipient was Casey Hicks, and is recognized as a standout student leader, known for volunteer projects at Bennett Spring, the Lebanon Library, and with the Junior Optimist Club. And, let's see, in May, we continued our public safety modernization efforts, and began building the structure of the FY twenty-six budget, that's of course, when May twenty-seventh, we had a work session, which was all about the budget and revenue planning, and we also discussed the lodging tax at that meeting as well, so. Let's see, in June, we completed the Fourth Street Intersection, which is a great project as well. I still, and I think you mentioned it several, about that time, or maybe August or something, about the curb marks, and I still haven't seen any-
There's one on-
Is there one on there now? Oh, man, broke the streak, okay. I, I meant to look today, I drove right past, and I, and I failed to look, but I hadn't seen any of them there, so, and probably a really bad driver.
It's on the curb.
It was probably me. I'm notorious about curbing my car, so. Let's see, we also approved FY twenty-six budget, which implemented some historic pay improvements for the police and fire, averaging, I think, eight and a half for police and twenty for fire, which is, certainly shows how much the commitment of this, this council has to our public safety across, across the community. We also continued throughout the summer, having many events in our parks, downtown district, and then we also did behind-the-scenes there, we had some major airport planning, which happened, some of that, Jared's already left here, so I'm not even going to mention him anymore, no, but, you know, concluded tonight with the taxiway and, you know, that apron project, that's a huge, huge addition to our airport, but that all started over the summer. Let's see, and as a fall, fall ride, we, we also, we did some more nuisance and code enforcements, and held our council, council, annual council retreat, which helped us prepare for long-term goals, and as we go into twenty-twenty-six. We also completed the medical SIM lab, hosting Governor Kehoe at the dedication ceremony, that was a great event, and, and that facility's really going to change the medical landscape inside the community, and really looking forward to what that's going to do to the, to the future of healthcare in Lebanon. Last month was also one of the, November was, we'd had approved some, actually, improvements out at Ashley Park with the concession stand and restroom facility, and then we did some multiple public safety technology upgrades as well, some engineering agreements, and just a lot of different things, it's, it's pretty wild, and of course, tonight, you know, really we kicked off, kicked off the end of the year by kicking off twenty-twenty-six. A lot of that, that we passed tonight really puts us into twenty-twenty-six pretty good, and with a lot of momentum, and looking forward to what that's going to do for the future next year. And so, that's, so if twenty-twenty-five is the year that we kind of laid a foundation down, then twenty-twenty-six, I really think is going to be a year that we accelerate. There's going to be a whole bunch of major infrastructure projects, park projects, then new training capacities coming online, and then also we're going to have big opportunities, like with the Route sixty-six Centennial coming online, the Kansas City World Cup, all that action's going on as well, and, you know, certainly, may, made, an idea may start up here, but certainly I want to thank all of you guys that's serving on, on this council, and it's, it's an honor and a privilege to be here, and then our city staff, you guys are amazing, and I know I say that all the time, but you guys are truly amazing, to what your, your commitment to this community is, is, I don't, I guess I can't compare to anything, because I don't, haven't lived anywhere else, but, but I can only imagine it would be the best. You guys agree? Okay, you guys agree? Good, good. But it certainly is, it's awesome to see, and, and then whenever, whenever some kind of harebrained ideas maybe that we, that we may have, or I may have myself, and then you guys implement them is truly, truly amazing and cool to see. And I also want to thank our community, I thank their input, and, and I know we have a survey going on, you know, too, right now, and we'll have a bigger one next, next spring on that as well, but, you know, that input from the, the community is certainly important and, and really drives, and I think everybody in this room really pays attention to that as much as they possibly can as well, and, and really try to implement that. And so I certainly want to thank them, and for their continued input, continued dedication to the community, and making it, this a great place to live, work, and play, and, and the community partnerships that we have throughout the community are certainly awesome to do, so with that, may, may this Christmas season bring peace, rest, and joy to all your, all your families, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and I look forward to seeing everyone again on January twelfth, which will be our next meeting of twenty-twenty-six, that's certainly, not, it'll be here before we know it, and hopefully it doesn't, twenty-twenty-six, I hope doesn't go as fast as twenty-twenty-five, it seems like this year just absolutely flew by, but certainly looking forward to that, so, so with that, my housekeeping that I usually do, January twelfth and January twenty-sixth will be our next two meetings, and those are both on Mondays as well, so certainly appreciate it, and thank you all very much, and if anybody